We will reopen our 5:30 meeting and we were under budget work session number three.
I need to call it, I called it earlier this meeting at 5:30.
I do have a motion, I mean, I have, uh, rocall, yes.
Aldo Benavides present.
Anthony Uresti present.
Esmeralda Solis present.
Nereida Cantú present.
Mary Hernandez present.
Roberto Samora present.
Alex Cantú present. I do declare a quorum and now we will move on to item number five, work session number three.
Good afternoon, Mr. Board President, Board of Trustees, Mr. Gonzales, Administration in La Jolla ISD Community. For today's work session, we will be discussing the staffing allocation for Student Services and Curriculum and Instruction. Then Mr. Ben Garza, our Chief Financial Officer, will be reviewing and discussing the possible increase of health insurance and co-pay deductibles for our employees. So we're going to go ahead and get started with the Student Services Department. You do have a binder, so you could go ahead and open it up to tab number one, page two. And like we did last time, we'll only review the items that are highlighted in green, since those are the items that indicated change for the departments. We're going to go ahead and get started with line number seven. And as you can see right there, we are going to be closing the Coordinator for Parental Involvement in this department. And then we go to line number eight, we do have the Student Attendance Accountability. We're going to reduce the FTEs from two to one. We do, in line number nine, we do have the College Career Readiness, Life Readiness. We're going to close that FTE due to the Staffing Adjustment Plan. If we go to line sixteen, we do have the Secretary for Guidance and Counseling. It is going to be shared with the Nurse Services. On line eighteen, we do have the Secretary for Nurse Services. We're going to close that FTE. If we move on to line twenty-three, we do, we are going to be opening up twelve positions for part-time counselors at the elementary level, and we are going to be paying that out of account two eighty-nine, which is Title Four. We feel that that is a need. And as far as the number of days, that is to be determined. As far as line twenty-four, we are looking at opening up a position for Community Engagement Relations Coordinator at Student Services. As far as the grant-funded positions in Student Services, as you can see right there, we do have in line twenty-five, the Contact Tracing Nurse Assistance. It is funded out of two eighty-two. We are looking at closing those positions. We do have a total of three right now. And just to give you a little bit of background information in regards to that, right now, we do have two at the high school and one at Seguin. We have line twenty-six, we have the Texas Ace Cycle Ten, Director, Coordinator, and Family Engagement Specialist. And those are the Cycle Ten is scheduled to, that grant is scheduled to close already. There are at year five, as of right now. So we have advised those employees about the fact that that grant is scheduled to close at the end of this school year.
Okay. Dr. Verial.
Yes.
Before you go on, question.
Yes.
On the Coordinator for Parental Involvement.
Uh huh.
Who would, who has taken or who would be taking these responsibilities, since you're saying we're moving it?
That's a question for, I know, Student Services. We will be working closely with the Assistant Superintendent for that department to see who would be taking on that, those roles. But one of the things that we've discussed is, I know that with the Staffing Adjustment Plan, we did determine, we did look at the individuals that were in within the department. We did talk about the Executive Director, that was one option there. And then we also talked about possibly line twenty-four, the Community Engagement Relations Coordinator as well.
That's what I was going to ask, because it sounds like the Community Engagement Relations Coordinator kind of sounds like that would be the person who...
Correct.
So my question is, are we just changing the title, or what is the Community Engagement Relations Coordinator exactly going to be doing?
So I know that that's something that, again, with Student Services, there were, the job description in itself would be working with the community, with its special events, organizing special events, aside from working with the parents within the district. But I know that Ms. Ayala could give you a little bit more information regards to that.
Yes, that, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead, and I'll speak.
That is exactly how we plan to move forward with that one, Dr. Cantú. Whenever this position was first changed, this school year, the responsibilities for the Parental Involvement Coordinator went to our Executive Director. For Student Services, she's doing an exceptional job. However, one of the concerns that we have with parents, when we meet with them at the round table, is that they would like an individual that they can work more closely with. So that is why we're proposing to open the Community Engagement Relations Coordinator, who will also work with not just parents, but with our community in general. That's, that's great, because I know that I've spoken to several parents that are part of the Shack Committee and the Round Table, and all of them share that concern. I think several of us have, have been addressed on that issue, where they do, would like someone, you know, who they could go to. And I, I was just assuming, it's the first time I see Community Engagement Relations Coordinator, so I was thinking, maybe that's what we were going to do, put them on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have just one parenthetical note, Dr. Verial, to the members of the board during this work session. Yes, essentially, if you want to circle number seven and number twenty-four, right, and the funding there is two eleven, right, so those SRF funds will go away in a year. We're beginning to merge and synergize. So these two positions will be parent involvement. Essentially, those duties will converge into this position. We're definitely going to have a focus in parent involvement. We promise you that. We're just beginning to cut, this year, we have a goal of about five to six million dollars worth of cuts that we will get to. And that will begin to ameliorate our twenty-five million dollar shortfall that we have. And so we're being fiscally responsible as we move forward every year, little by little. As I mentioned, a thirty-six month plan for us to become fiscally solvent and be completely in the black.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzales. And on page three, as you can see right there at the top, you see a summary of all the proposed changes for Student Services. If you move on to page four, now you will have, we will start with Curriculum and Instruction. And we will start on line ten. On line ten, you see that we are closing the Elementary PE Health Specialist Position due to the Staffing Adjustment Plan. Then we move on to line eleven. As you can see right there, you will have the Secondary PE Health Specialist converting that to an Assistant Director, since we are closing the Elementary PE Health Specialist Position. On line twelve, as you can see, the District Wellness Strategist Position was closed due to the Staffing Adjustment Plan. If we move on to line thirteen, we did close the Engineer, Television Engineer, due to the Staffing Adjustment Plan as well. Moving on to the Sports and Learning Complex, on line seventeen, the Planetarium and Learning Complex Specialist, that was closed due to Staffing Adjustment Plan as well. And moving on to line twenty-three, the Golf Shop Assistant, it was closed due to Staffing Adjustment Plan. And then moving on to line twenty-five, the Golf Superintendent, closed due to attrition. As far as the Bilingual Department, under Curriculum and Instruction, line twenty-seven, we do have the Bilingual ESL Supervisor, reduced from three to two. And that's there at the Bilingual Department. But moving on to the Elementary Education, line thirty, we do have Executive Director for Elementary Education, reduced to one, and convert one FTE to Director. So if we move on to page five, line thirty-eight, now we have part-time tutors as needed. We went ahead and added it here, and that's to be determined. We wanted to make sure that we included it in our Staffing Adjustment, Staffing allocations, just so everybody could be informed. And this is something that we would be hiring for these positions throughout the year as needed, and it would be for our Tier Three campuses. We just want to make sure that everybody's aware that throughout the year, based on needs, we would be bringing in these part-time tutors. Okay? Middle School Education, as you can see on line forty-one, Middle School Education Secretary, closed by attrition. Line forty-five, Middle School Social Studies Coordinator, reopened for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, due to the STAR redesign. As you all know, it is a more rigorous assessment, so there is a need to bring back this position in itself. Secondary Education, line fifty-three, the Secretary for Language Arts, we went ahead and closed this position. Line fifty-three, Secretary for Science Department, we closed this position as well. Secretary for Social Studies, line fifty-four, closed this position. And now moving on to CCMR, line fifty-eight, the Coordinator for CTE, reduced from three to two. Line sixty-four, the Academy Marketing Specialist, closed due to the Staffing Adjustment Plan. Line sixty-seven, the Academy Secretary, closed due to attrition. If we move on to page six, line seventy-eight, we do have the Fine Arts Coordinator. We did add one existing Fine Arts Coordinator to the Fine Arts PAC staff. And then moving on to the Migrant Department, line eighty-two, we do have the Migrants New Generation System Specialist, reduced from three to two due to the Staffing Adjustment Plan. And then we do have line eighty-five, the Data Entry Clerk, increased the numbers of days from two oh two to two twenty-six. Now, we do have the Special Ed Department on line eighty-seven. We do have the Special Ed Supervisor. We did a look into increasing the days from two oh seven to two seventeen. The Diagnostician for Special Ed, we do have a proposal of increasing by one. So we're going from twenty-seven Diagnosticians to twenty-eight.
Dr. V, I just want to interrupt for a little bit parenthetically, so our board would have the special note, that the staff allocation plan, and we have some of the most qualified and student-focused cabinet members here, administrators, that, I was speaking with Dr. Samora, I said, I think I had a little something to do with recruitment, you know, twenty years ago. But, but we're student-focused, so when these positions, when we're adding days, it's because we're looking at needs. Needs that have come about from either audits from the state, TEA, real acute needs. And so we're, as we move forward, these positions, when we're looking at either cutting or adjusting the allocation, in this case, adding days to a position, it's because there's a student need, and the state is requiring us to add more attention to, in this case, Special Ed. But I just wanted everybody to know that there's, none of this is arbitrary. We're really focused on student needs. Our outcomes based on data and on requirements from the state. Just wanted to add that.
Yes. Thank you so much, Mr. Gonzales, for adding that. As you all know, we have been, we've had to submit corrective actions under RDA, Result-Determined Accountability, looking at the data across the board, across the region, looking at, you know, behavior specialists, you know, and who has some, who doesn't, you know, when we look at our district, we, we really, we're understaffed in regards to that. And you're going to be able to see, when we're looking at the percentages of our kids, when we look at the number of Special Ed kids that we currently have, our growth is a lot higher compared to the rest of the, the rest of the districts across the valley, when we're looking at the growth. And I'll share a little bit of the percentages in a little bit, but you are right, Mr. Gonzales. Looking at line number ninety, the Speech Language Pathologist, we increased from ten to twelve, we're proposing. Line ninety-one, Licensed Specialist School Psychologist, increased from three to five. And then Occupational Therapist, increased from one to two. Now looking at ninety-eight, we do have the, the School Health Related Services. We're asking, as far as the clerk, to decrease from two hundred and twenty-six to two hundred and twenty. Line ninety-nine, we're asking to decrease the days from two twenty-six to two twenty for our Special Education Resource Clerks. And then line a hundred, we're asking to decrease the days from two hundred and twenty-six to two twenty for our Special Education Student Accountability SEMS Clerks. And then if we look at line a hundred and one, for our Special Education Student Accountability SEMS Clerks, again, decrease the days from two twenty-six to two twenty. And then a hundred and two, line a hundred and two, the Special Ed Instructional Coaches, right there, we are adding these, we're adding three of these instructional coaches. And as far as the Behavior Specialists, BSTs, line one oh three, we're adding five. And this is where I was talking to you all, compared to the rest of the districts across the valley, looking at the districts in itself, all districts do provide behavior specialists when it comes to the Special Ed Department. I know that we, as a district, we do have three behavior specialists in our district, but it's with our general, they service our general population. And looking at the percentages across the region here in the valley, we do have Edinburgh ISD that has seventeen percent of their, their students that, that are Special Ed, that have, you know, have been identified needing behavior services. PSJA with nineteen percent. And our district has been, has identified twenty-three point three percent, as you can see. It's a lot larger than other districts. I just wanted to share some percentages there.
So in a nutshell, Dr. V, we were over-identified and under-resourced. So we, we had cut these positions in the past, you know, where Special Ed counselors, positions that were focused on this area. And of course, the indicators within the assessment, you know, table left us exposed with, you know, underperforming. And where the state had to intervene. And so these are areas, if we're asking for an increase in adjusting, it's because it's a student need. And, and that is why we see us cutting some areas. And literally, I have to commend Ben Garza, our CFO, and I, and I want to add context, Salsa Los Tacos, right, to the boardroom, so you know why we're presenting this, because we had, the CFO saying no to everything, and every one of our assistant soup saying, wait a minute, I don't want to lose my staff, I don't want to lose my staff, I want to, and so we all had to come together and say, what is the student need, right? We know what adult wants are. We want to be efficient and have more staff, but are we being, you know, you know, effective? Are we being cost-effective, right? And so, Dr. V did a great job of, you know, pulling, you know, hairs, you know, teeth, tooth. And Pep is laughing because it's, we're all fighting for our staff. But, but I commend everybody, because we're presenting to this board in this work session, so you know, data, information that we've internalized, and we're focusing on the student needs, and also paying very close attention to what the state is saying we must and shall take a look at and make adjustments.
Thank you. Moving on to page number seven, if we look at the Technology Department, we are proposing a change here, to go from a name change, a title change to this department, to go from the Technology Department to Technology and Instructional Resource Department. And if we look at line a hundred and ten, as you can see right there, we did close the position for District Instructional Technology due to the Staffing Adjustment Plan. We look at line a hundred and twelve, the Technology Integration Coach, converted to the Library Service and Instructional Coordinator due to the Department consolidation, if it does go through. And then line a hundred and fourteen, we do have the Network Technician. We have FTEs will be moved to the campuses. They will not be, within the department, we will assign them to the campuses. Okay? We do have line a hundred and fifteen, we have the Network Technicians, add one FTE from twelve to thirteen. And again, they will be housed at the campuses. And then line a hundred and sixteen, we have the Specialist Network Administrative. We reduce by one, from four to three. We have line a hundred and eighteen, we have closed that position, Library Services and Instructional Resources, and again, due to the consolidation. And then line one hundred and nineteen, the Secretary for Library and Media, we're going to close that by attrition or reassignment. And then line a hundred and twenty, we do have the Coordinator for Instructional Resource and Print Shop, changed the title to Coordinator for Instructional Resource. Print Shop is now under the Finance Department. We do have line a hundred and twenty-three, the AV/Library/Media Technician, convert one FTE by attrition or reassignment to Network Tech. And then we do have line a hundred and twenty-four, closed that due to Staffing Adjustment Plan. So we closed that position. And then line a hundred and twenty-five, the Museum Manager, we need to, we need to close, or we closed it due to the Staffing Adjustment Plan. Moving on to the Grant Funded Position, line a hundred and twenty-nine, the Virtual Academy Director Position, that has been closed. And then also line a hundred and thirty-two, the SRF Administrator, we closed that position, since we're paying a stipend, and we reviewed it when we reviewed this stipend plan for twenty-three, twenty-four. Okay. And then what you see following, what you see in the rest of the page right there, is just a summary of what I just shared with you all, and it continues on page eight. Okay? Any questions that you all might have in regards to the staffing allocation for twenty-three, twenty-four?
I do. I'm going to start off with Athletics Department.
Yes.
Coach Garza's there, but, what's the reasoning behind changing the Specialist to Assistant Director?
I know that, I know that that's what, that was one of the requests that was made due to the fact that we're not going to have any longer, one for the elementary, one for the secondary. So I know Coach Garza and Mr. Munoz feel that it would be more efficient and more effective to be able to have the Assistant Director that would be able to assist Mr. Garza.
And is that a pay raise, or is that just?
That's not something that has been discussed, but it would be something that we would look into based on the recommendations from these two gentlemen.
If it's a Specialist to Assistant Director.
More likely.
And I know that we currently...
You're just combining the two. We're just combining, we're just combining, right, the Specialist for Elementary and Middle School, because there's no more Elementary, there's only going to be a Middle School, but it's going to be changed to Assistant Athletic Director?
Correct.
That's correct. We will be, save an FTE, that's, that one's salary. Plus, the current Specialists are getting a ten thousand dollar stipend. That will no longer be assigned to that position, right? So that will offset that increase in salary costs that potentially might happen because of the promotion.
A stipend because of what?
They had a ten thousand dollar stipend assigned to that position, Mr. Uresti, because as Specialists, right, their teacher contracts, and those positions were working a year-long, staying after school for events.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
Exactly. So once that position becomes an administrator position, right, that's going to be rolled in, and they're going to be able to do all those duties without us having to compensate it extra.
And we'll have how many Assistant Athletic Directors now?
One.
One.
Well, I mean, we didn't have Assistant Athletic.
Yes, we didn't have one before.
The position did not exist.
Oh, I see.
That's why I'm asking why we're going from Specialist to Assistant Directors.
Because we will no longer have an Elementary, so instead of the other one just taking care of Middle School, it'll be overall.
The whole district. Yes, that is correct.
So does our Athletic Director get a stipend because of extra hours?
So he should, yes.
No, I'm saying that because we're saying here, ten thousand dollars, because they have extra work. We look at the coaches, they will do that, but it seems like ten thousand dollars.
Yes, they were...
The compensation plan that had previously been approved, Dr. Samora, for those two positions.
They're receiving ten thousand dollars.
They were teacher contracts, and they were required to stay after school, work through the summer, stay for the games, travel with the teams.
But they were on a teacher's contract then?
That's correct.
I had a question on the Bilingual Department.
Yes.
The fact that we're reducing, I know that in the past, our bilingual children have not been performing where they need to be. And so I would like for, at the next board meeting, for you to bring the results of our bilingual kids, and how that can be justified to reduce the supervisor when we're barely getting our kids out. I don't know how our kids did this year on TELPAS, but I know that the results in the past have needed attention.
Now, that position is currently vacant, Dr. Benavides. We haven't filled it this year.
I know, that's Mr. Olvera's, Mr. Olvera's position, but I am concerned about that.
Sure.
Dr. Verial.
Yes.
Who's in charge of the Planetarium and Learning Complex?
As of right now, we do have somebody assigned from Curriculum and Instruction that's overseeing that, depending on the use of the building. I know that we have Ms. Salinas, and with the Curriculum and Instruction that oversees and assigns, based on whoever wants to come in and visit the Planetarium.
And we're closing it?
Well, it was already closed.
So that position, that person that was assigned there has been, that position has been closed, or has that person has been reassigned?
So the position has been vacant all year, as you know. Nobody has filled it. When a school or a department needs to use the Planetarium, they're coordinating that through Ms. Salinas. If a campus needs to, would like to visit, our Science Coordinators, the Science Department is facilitating those campuses.
Yes.
That's what I was asking, because I know it's been vacant for this year, but I didn't know who was, if schools were still visiting it and was taking care of it.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, going back to the Athletic Department, real quick.
Yes.
I know we had, we had, the Television Engineer was part of the Staffing Adjustment Plan, but who's taking over social media for the Athletics Department? Because I do think that highlighting our student athletes is crucial to our district.
So right now, Mr. Uresti, we're working with a PR department, so that they can be providing coverage for the different events. However, Coach Garza has worked with the high schools, and he does have a plan to continue with the coverage, because again, we want to highlight all of our students. So in an upcoming meeting, we can present as to what the plan is to be able to continue with it.
Yeah. I just want to make sure somebody's on top of it, because recently, we've had teams in the playoffs, and I really want to highlight the girls that have, our softball girls, La Jolla and Palmview, that made it to the playoffs and competed.
And the boys that are still playing.
The boys that are about to start.
Yes, sir.
And I agree, Mr. Uresti. I know that the conversation that we've had with CNI and also with CNI through the Athletic Department is, yes, we want to make sure that we use the skills of our students at the high school level, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we also use our PR department, and we also use, you know, our adults as well, because our students can help us to a certain point, right? But the adults in itself, they themselves need to make sure that they guide and assist our students as to how it's done, and be those, those models for them. So we are developing a plan and making sure that they have that support.
One of the ideas is that we partner with our Journalism classes and Yearbook classes from the high school, and that we involve those students within the program, so that they can accompany the students that are competing, or assistants when they're competing, and they're being, posting those things into the social media.
That would be nice. I know my daughter, she's a, she's a high school student, and the students are the ones that do the broadcasting, and, and it's a good learning experience for all her kids.
I would say it's kind of like the yearbook, where we have their own students taking the yearbook pictures and photographers, well, this is, this is...
They do the recording and everything, and it's pretty, it's real nice. Any other questions?
Not a question, just a request for our next work session. If we could get a summary of what was saved as a result of the Staff Adjustment Plan, how much money was saved? And how much money was saved from, because some of them, I've noticed, are Title One and they're two eighty-nine. We're not saving any money from local. So I would like to see how much we saved from local, and the other amounts also, but I'm very interested in the local amount. And then while I do agree with the needs for Special Ed and addressing our kids as necessary, will local be paying for all those positions? Because I know that we already have to get out of local to pay the extra Special Ed services and personnel. So is that going to continue to dip into the, the local budget, and how much?
We're hoping we won't have to. Dr. Benavides, I know that the legislative session right now is rethinking the funding for Special Ed. So we're hoping that will be increased and that should offset this additional FTEs. I know that in our actual budget presentations, it seems as if we're overdrafting, right, when it comes to the one ninety-two. But once you look at the actual distribution of the, of the fund or the entitlement, we basically break even. Because on the one ninety-two and in the presentation, they are showing you the allocation that the district gives to, on the one ninety-two, which is fifty-five percent of the one ninety-two goes to the Special Ed Department, forty-five percent goes to indirect costs. But once you look at it as a whole, a hundred percent of the one ninety-two, plus whatever we're getting on the shards returned, we're basically breaking even.
If that's the case, that would be the first time, because in the past, we've never broken even. We've always had to use our local budget to help pay Special Ed.
Now, and again, it's not fair, right, that at the state level, that is the way we are funded, right? Because in most districts, they're able to keep that forty-five percent for their activity fund or for the general fund balance, right? We're having to dip into it because of the needs that our kids have and that our community has when it comes to Special Ed.
So just to add to what Dr. Benavides was saying, then what we really need then is to have what amendments have been made, what changes have been made. to have what amendments have been made, what changes have been made, adjustments, but then do it by funding source so that we will know. We had $27 million funded from the two eighty-two or two eighty-one ESR funds and our test was to find that amount of money from one ninety-nines. And the question that I guess that needs to be answered, how close are we to getting there? And unless we get to see that, you know, it's, it'll be hard for us to then move towards budget making.
And I do want to commend our staff because ultimately, you know, you all have been working very hard and as long as, we know what, you know, adult needs are, but as long as we make sure we satisfy our children's needs, that's all that matters at the end of the day. And with that, I do want to make a, a recommendation and appoint three people to a finance committee. That way we're able, the board is able to ask any questions or any, be a little bit more informative of our finance and make recommendations to this board or to anybody else that needs recommending. And they're, they're able, we are able to act on them and make sure we make the right decision based on our students. And my, we'll do it right now. I would like to appoint Ms. Hernandez, Dr. Cantu and Mr. Udesti to this finance committee and you all can start meeting already as soon as next week so that we can, all these questions can be asked and we can be a little bit more informative of the situation and you can come to the board and make sure we are, we get answers to those questions.
We'll gladly prepare, Mr. President accordingly.
Thank you. Any other questions? We can move on to review and discussion the possible increase of health insurance, copay and deductibles for employees.
Good afternoon, Board President and members of the board, interim superintendent, Mr. Gonzalez. My name is Ben Garza. I'm the CFO for La Jolla ISD and I'm here to discuss with you the health insurance fund. I do have Mr. Eli Rodriguez here. He's our Director of Risk Management. In case we have any technical questions on what I'm going to go over, he can, I can defer some of those questions if I can't answer them. On the first slide, the district sponsored a modified self-insurance plan to provide healthcare benefits to staff members and their dependents. The different, the district offers three plans, the high plan, the low plan and the new plan. The high plan is a ninety-ten, the low plan is eighty-twenty and the new plan is seventy-thirty. I'm going to give you a brief history on the financial history of the health insurance fund, beginning with 2020. As you can see, the health insurance fund, each fiscal year has been a loss. We're unable to keep up with the amount of expenses that are going through that fund. And with that loss, the, most of those monies is then funded through the general fund. We're going to have to move money over from the general fund to help support the health insurance fund. As you can see in 2020, it was $6.8 million loss, but in 2021, it went down to $2 million. That was the year we changed to our fiscal year to a 10-month fiscal year. So that means we only had 10 months of expenses in there, plus that was a year of COVID. So expenses went down drastically. It shot back up in 2022 to 7.6 million and as of April 30th, 2023, we're at 4.5 million. So I was told that self-insured does not constitute self-sufficient. So, and that's a, a true thing here. We're not, just because we're self-insured doesn't mean it's, can pay for itself. As you can see, we're having losses. The majority of these losses are funded with the general fund monies. Monies that we can be used in other areas for, for student services or for student needs across the district. The next slide, I have the history of changes to the health insurance fund. Back in 2020, 2021, the, we took action on increasing the district portion of contributions to $460 per month per subscriber, or that equates to $5,604 per subscriber per year. In 2122, we closed the district health clinic. The district surveyed the employees to determine whether to increase employee contribution rates or close the clinic, well, the latter prevailed and, but we had a savings of approximately $1.2 million. In 2022, 2023, we increased the district portion of contributions by $530 per month per subscriber, which equates to $6,360 per subscriber per year. On the next slide, I have a comparison. Looks like there's a lot going on here, but it's actually two huge rows, two plan years, 2021 in the top portion and 2022 in the bottom portion. And I'm comparing, comparing each plan from one plan year to the next plan year with a difference on the bottom that shows increase or decrease. And on the new plan, we had an increase in claims from 2022, from 2021 to 2022 of 9,363, 63 claims. In the low plan, we had a decrease in claims by 133. And on the high plan, there was an increase of claims of $2,624. On the new plan, the plan paid $3,641,000 more than last year. In total, in all plans, we had an increase in claims of 11,854 and an increase that the district paid out of $3.2 million or $3,251,000. The goal here is to, to reduce the amount of what the plan pays out, but still maintain to provide the best plan to the employee of La Jolla ISD without increasing premiums. On this page is the copay options, what we can do to try to have some savings. We have the high plan, the low plan, the new plan. The high plan currently pays $15 for their copay. The low plan pays $25 and the new pan, plan pays $35. On option one, if we were to increase the copay by $5, it would go up to $20 for the high plan. The low plan would be $30. The new plan would be $40. On option two, if we were to increase the, the copay by $10, the high plan would go up to $25, the low plan to $35 and the new plan to $45. So what we did is we took the average of the last two years' claims and if we take that average and multiply it by that increase, on option one, we can have an approximate savings of about $1.7 million. And on option two, we can have an estimated savings of about twice that amount of $3.4 On this screen is a proposed deductible and out-of-pocket increase. What's in red is what would be changing. We have the, we have four quadrants, the individual deductible, below that, the family deductible. On the next, on the right column, we have individual out-of-pocket and the family out-of-pocket. On the individual deductible, if we were to increase it by $250, our deductible we increased up to $500. On the low plan, if we increase it by 250, it'll go up to $800 for the deductible. And on the new plan, it'll go up to $1,000. On the family deductible, the proposed increase is $500. The high plan would go up to 1250. The low plan would go up to 2150 and the new plan would go up to 2750. On the individual out-of-pocket, the high plan, the proposed increase is $750. The high plan would go up to $2,500, the low plan up to $2,800 and the new plan up to $3,500. And the family out-of-pocket would increase by 750 as well to go up to $6,000 on the high plan. And the low plan it'd go up to $6,900 and then the new plan it'd go up to $9,000. But the estimated savings on each one, on the individual deductible, we have a subtotal, subtotal estimated savings of $456,500. On the family deductible, we'd have an estimated seventies, savings of $32,500. And on the individual out-of-pocket, we'd have an estimated savings of one point, $1,371,300. And the family out-of-pocket, we'd have a estimated savings of $706,275. And in total, on the bottom left, we have a grand total estimated savings, if we were to increase it as proposed there, of $2,566,575. This slide shows the deductible and out-of-pocket comparison to other districts in the region. As you can see, what's highlighted in yellow on the top portion, we have the current comparison. What's highlighted in, in yellow is the better plan amongst the rest of the districts. If we were to make those change, as you can see, there's six different plans there. The individual plan has three and the family plan has another three, in total six. Out of the six, four of them are highlighted in yellow. That means we have the best plan compared to the other districts. If we were to make that change on, on the proposed comparison in the bottom, those, now we're, we're, we're still in good shape and we have three that are highlighted in yellow that we still have the better plan compared to the other districts. On this slide, I just wanted to show our premium comparison. The first column is La Jolla ISD and as we continue to provide the best rates to our employees, and I just wanted to point that out, as you can see in, in the La Jolla ISD column, all of ours are yellow because we have the better rates compared to our neighboring On this slide is now my potential estimated savings. If we were to choose option one and the copay was $5, we can have a total proposed estimated savings of $4,272,000. If we were to choose option two, we would have a proposed estimated savings of $5,979,000. So we want to be cost-effective and efficient on this, so, but I want to point out that if we don't take any action, this means that we will continue to have a loss of $5 to $6 million a year if we don't do anything about making changes to our health insurance fund. So this is just to look at, consider, understand we're going to have a finance committee, so we can have a finance committee meeting to go over it again in detail if we need to. But I just want to know, want everybody to know that we still remain number one on our health insurance and how we provide it to our employees because we want to take care of employees as best as we can without affecting them in the pocketbook. So, and that's all. That's the end of my presentation. Do we have any questions?
I think you just said it perfectly at the end there, Mr. Garza, when you said that we need to make, we do need to make adjustments. As long as our employees still have the number one coverage compared to other districts and we don't affect student, or students, then I, I, I'm all for the changes that we need to get done.
And, and these proposals will only affect the employees that actually use our insurance. So we're not increasing their premiums. So for the people that, if we increase their premiums, we're going to affect the people that, that if they don't use it, they're getting affected on a monthly basis. But the ones that do use it, they'll, they'll see that an increase in their copay or their deductible occur.
Mr. Garza, when you say that we are getting cost savings.
Yes.
Are those cost savings being transferred over to employees where they are paying for those costs?
Those, those monies will remain in the general fund.
But it is not because the employees are needing to pay for it?
Correct. Yeah, well, if they, if they go use it, yes.
Mr. Garza, let me share a parenthetical note. This is important, especially for Dr. Samora. Your question is very key. As we remain student-focused and data-driven and results-oriented, what, what really shifts our moral compass as, as, as the district that is outstanding, right? And that is always prolific. You just asked a while ago about which fund this might come out of. And so every time we look at the historical losses, that's money coming out of our kits, right? And this is money that we could invest specifically in our kids. So when our board president or our board member say what adult wants versus student needs, just with a slight adjustment, we're still remaining number one in the region. We still offer the best compensation package of any other surrounding district because we care about our teachers and we want to be able to proudly state that our teachers are, you know, blessed and compensated at La Jolla ISD. At the same time, what our CFO and our administration is asking us to take a mindful look at is that how can we mitigate and ameliorate that annual loss of four, five, six million? Minor adjustments have a saving that and still remaining the best plan to our, our teachers, our staff. And Ben, you were right. If you don't use, I haven't been to the doctor in many, many, many years and knock on wood, there's no wood around me. But, but, but if you don't use it, it doesn't affect your monthly paycheck. If you use it, it's a little bit more, but if we can communicate the message from the boardroom to the classroom that if we, if we ever move in the direction of just having everybody pay a little more, you're still number one, you still have the best and every time you do that, you're helping kids. Because those funds are, correctly from wrong, Mr. Munoz, right? Special education funds, CTE funds, funds that could be used immediately directly to students.
But the plan that you're proposing is not to increase premiums at all.
At all.
It's just to increase our copay when we go to the doctor.
Correct.
So, I mean, this is another way to, to look at it and still, you know, provide the best.
Yes.
Because you cannot continue with this shortfall of six million, seven million, four million. I mean, we've been looking at this for years and, and we haven't addressed it.
Yes.
Thank you. Let's make sure to say that, that what you just said is that if you do go to the doctor, then you would be liable for $10 more of your copay, but it's not, it's not $10, $20, $30 extra a month out of your paycheck. It's just because you went to the doctor and you're using it, that's why you're going to have to pay just a little more.
Correct. That's correct. Thank you.
The other question I have, sir, is that I know that you have the number of claims?
Yes.
Would it be helpful for us to know like how many take the individual, how many take the families so that we could also see what kind of impact that would have? Some of them take individuals, some take families, some take just individual and children.
I think we already have that.
Good.
But we'll, we'll provide that with, for you, Dr. Samora. Okay?
Any other questions? I think we, I think we, we could, we could even take action and, and move forward with.
President, members of the board, I recommend motion authorizing the superintendent to proceed with the best possible staffing allocations as discussed and the most financially competitive health insurance package for all employees.
That's a motion. Can I have a motion approved?
So.
I have a motion by Mr. Udesti. You need a second?
Second.
Second, I'm Mr. Solis. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll suppose, motion carries. It is now six seventeen. I need a motion to adjourn.
So.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll suppose, meeting adjourned at six seventeen.